That's what I've heard. I don't care.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with the budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance to the fire in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming out. We're gonna start with the approval of the agenda. I've got a couple of changes here. We're gonna add under the attorney's report L for closed session for union negotiation and potential litigation, separate items. We're gonna delete K two resignation of firefighter Brent Firkson and eliminate consent agenda, D five park board minutes. Those will be on the next meeting. Anything else, Dan?
I have nothing.
Dwayne?
Nothing for me.
Tim, anything else? No, no. Ryan? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as changed.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks for having me. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda, everything's in there. Any questions for the administrator or staff on the consent agenda?
Move to approve with the change.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
No, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, no visitors tonight. Uh, mayor's report, the only thing I have to report there is, um, I know there's a lot of people here tonight for, uh, the roundabouts, stoplights, Highway fifty-seven project. There's a public meeting now scheduled for September thirtieth at six o'clock here for that particular topic. So, six o'clock here on September thirtieth. Um, so it's not on our agenda tonight, but I'll move into the next one, the public forum. I do have one card for someone to speak. We allow some time for someone to speak at every meeting. You're welcome to share opinions wherever with the council. That's perfectly fine and encouraged. Um, but we will have a meeting specifically to that topic on the thirtieth at six P M. So, Kent?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I'm not quite sure how I got into this, but I'm here. As you know, and as I pointed out in the article that I wrote in the newspaper, um, I did own the property there at thirty-four and fifty-seven. And, uh, so the roundabout that was scheduled for there was certainly of interest to me. I accumulated a lot of information and then I really didn't need it because I sold the property. But, uh, I had it and everybody I had talked to about it seemed to be, I don't wanna say vehemently, but very emotionally opposed to the concept. And so, and many people were totally unaware of what was being planned. And so, I felt a responsibility to pass that information on to the community and, uh, let people make a decision. And, uh, so that's where it is. That's how I got into it. Um, I did get a response from Senator Senjum and, uh, let's see if I can find that for you. His response was basically, uh, that this is a city issue, not a state issue. And so that was a mistake in my article. I directed the responses and that to the district engineer in Rochester who I'd talked to previously. I found him a very receptive, uh, person. And so, I thought that if anybody was gonna respond to this and take it seriously, he would do so. But that was the wrong person to respond to. It should've been to you people. So, he's pointed out, Senator Senjum pointed out that except as provided in subsection, subdivision aid A, no portion of the county-state aid highway system lying within the corporate limits of the city shall be constructed, reconstructed, or improved, nor the grade thereof changed without the prior approval of the plans of the governing body of such city. And the approval shall be in the manner and form required by the commissioner. And that certainly applies to MINDOT projects. But as you all well know, this is not a MINDOT project. This is a city project. And so, what both, uh, several engineers that I've talked to at MINDOT, as well as the district engineer have pointed out, they basically, uh, reserved veto rights on this project. In other words, if you were to put something in that just would not flow properly for traffic or was unsafe for traffic, they would not contribute to it. So, that's what they're reserving for authority here. So, it's really up to you to do to the design. Now, you've done a design. You've had an intersection control evaluation done, an ICE report. And in that ICE report, they looked at four options. They looked at two stoplights, two stop signs. They looked at four stop signs. And they looked at a roundabout. And they looked at stoplights. And as we all know, stop signs in these intersections are just not right. Certainly thirty-four's got stop signs now. They're not right. Okay? That needs more help there. The ICE report basically concluded both the stoplights and the roundabouts were of equal, were equal as far as traffic control and as far as safety is concerned. So, this is not, neither one of those are something that, uh, we could expect MINDOT to veto. So, now you see their level of response. Chris, Tim, you both got copies of emails like I did. We got a pile of them, about thirty of them. I've gotten thirty. I don't know how many you've gotten. But we've gotten over thirty emails. There's not one in there that says, "I don't like roundabouts." In spite of your grandfather, Brandon, these are not people that are saying they don't like roundabouts. That's what you said last week, or last meeting. So, that's what I'm referring to. People aren't saying they don't like roundabouts. They're saying they don't like roundabouts in this application. Okay? So, what I would suggest, what I would suggest is that these two alternatives, the roundabouts and the stoplights, be presented to the public in equal detail. If you notice in the article, the roundabout had a very complete, if you will, geometrics. New word I learned. Okay? The roundabout had very detailed geometrics. The stop signs were just there as a concept. That concept was never thoroughly, um, engineered, if you will. Okay? So, if you're really gonna allow the public at this meeting to make an informed decision, those two designs have to be presented in equal detail. Okay? Otherwise, if you simply take those nice pretty geometrics for the roundabouts, you put it up for the people to comment on, what do they do? They don't have an alternative. It's basically, you can comment on it, but this is what we're gonna do. That's the impression they're gonna get. Okay? So, that's what I would request the council to do, is to commission whomever does that kind of thing to do it in the same complete detail and offer both options to the republic, to the republic for which it stands, to the public for their comments. Okay? And I don't know, there's quite a few people here. You have both gotten
We've got.
responses and you know what it is.
Yep.
But maybe those that would prefer to have the stoplights instead of the roundabouts, Dan? And I'm doing this to shorten this question. Otherwise, we're gonna have to cut it.
Okay.
I think we need more information before we can
Yeah.
make this decision. And that's why I'm here. But as of right now, that's the way I'm being. Thank you.
Yeah.
So, you can see it and you saw the emails and that. So, I don't know what else I can say other than this needs equal presentation to the public. If you can't get it by September thirtieth, I would suggest delaying that. Okay? Until such time that you can give the public complete information. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Kent, the one thing I would ask you to do, simply because we normally ask everyone to do it, and I think everybody here knows.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The one thing that we normally ask everyone to do when they come up for the public forum part is to start by stating their name and their address for the record. Could you do that before you?
My name is Kent Keller. And, uh, my address is in Mantleville, P O Box ninety-seven. And, uh, my...
Those were the only two things that we normally ask everyone to do.
Yeah, thanks, Kent. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. And as I said before, that September thirtieth, six P M., here at City Hall. Okay? And I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. Um, we're gonna move on with the rest of the agenda. If that was what you were here for and you're not interested in else, or you can stick around. It's gonna be really exciting stuff for the next hour or so. So, but thank you all for coming out. Appreciate it. Um, we're gonna go on to old business, the council discussion on two thousand twenty-two budget and levy. Um, let's get to, we have two options we need to talk about there. This is where we're gonna set our preliminary budget that will be sent to the county so they can go out in the proposed tax statements in December. Um, whatever we set here is just the top ceiling. We can't go over that. We can always lower it from what we started out. Uh, we kinda had a goal at the last time we talked about this, is we're gonna try to come in somewhere under six percent if we could in December. So, the question is now, do we wanna set a preliminary budget? I don't have them side by side. What's the two percentages? One's at eleven point six.
Eleven point six.
Yep.
And the other one is?
Six point three.
Three, yep.
I'll just take my opinion. I would like to see us set the preliminary budget. If our goal is gonna be to less than six percent anyway, I'd like to see the preliminary budget at the six point three. It'll eliminate a lot of headache for staff, people with the proposed tax statements when they come out.
I think that's one of our bigger issues too. In the past, sometimes we've come in a little bit higher because we do wanna have that flexibility. But, uh, we noticed last year and, um, there tends to be a little bit more, uh, the public doesn't quite understand the process always and how it works. And so, it seems like being as close to the, what we hope to achieve is our goal, there are definitely, in the budget itself, and Nancy has gone through it, uh, with the fine-toothed cone. And, uh, there were some questions today. And if you guys ever have questions about the budget, we certainly would love to sit down with you one-on-one. It's easier to go through things in that way. Um, there's still a lot of flexibility in the actual line items themselves. The biggest change that you'd see here would be, um, directly related to public safety, where we have, um, we feel like we've kind of got a plan over the next two years to, um, work towards adding a police officer position. That's the feedback I've gotten. Um, we wanna work towards that. Next year, kind of bridging that using overtime. And then in two thousand twenty-three, adding that full-time police officer. That's our goal because we feel like it'll give us more flexibility. Um, and also by doing that, we increase the budget gradually as opposed to a large, um, one-year increase. Um, so that's the biggest shift that you see from the initial look that you had in August until now. Um, other than that, there are some, um, you know, what I've been doing is going through and just taking a look at each budget itself and making some suggestions. And then I'll be going through those with department heads to see if there's some cost savings that we can generate. Um, most of the line items aren't gonna change dramatically, but, um, because some of the baseline costs, as you've got there, you know, we have a general fund levy, we have a library levy, economic development, and then debt service. And the debt service, there's only so many changes that are available or possible. Um, you know, that, those costs are fixed. They are what they are. And, uh, so anyways, I don't know. Nancy, if you wanna talk at all about it yourself?
No, I think you've covered it. We pretty much made the one significant change and then a few others that, uh, Tim had considered that he'll bring to the department heads. So, this is kinda where we're at. Um, we invite a council direction for, you know, the final levy in December, especially what to target. If you have a number that's more specific, we will work toward that. But we will also see what we can do with the department heads even before then. So, tonight we just ask you to approve the preliminary levy and to approve the resolution for, it would be option B, since that sounds like what you're in favor of, that the six point three percent increase.
That was my suggestion. We can hear from everybody else. So...
To me, I'm a little bit hesitant at the six point three, only because there's still some unknowns, you know, because of the union negotiations and the insurance. So, you know, unless we've got a really good feeling as to where those are gonna come in, to me it's, and I've gone through this multiple times, you're right, the public don't understand the process. But every year, we're explaining the process. So, what's another year of explaining the process?
Sure.
To those who don't understand it. We do it every year anyway. So, even at six point three, we're still gonna need to explain the process. So, I'm more inclined to stick at the eleven point six than come down.
And I agree with Dwayne.
Only because of the unknowns.
I agree with Dwayne. And part of my discussions that I had with Tim and Nancy earlier was, this is a weird month. This is that truly rare occasion when we have the library board meeting after the first council meeting. And some of the smaller line item changes that were made to the library budget are going, there will be questions at the library board level as to why. And I know Tim is already planning to come to the meeting on Tuesday and explain it to them. But for the reasons that Dwayne said, I would be more comfortable going with version A, just so that all of those questions can be answered and addressed, rather than finding out after the fact that any of these numbers were off. And as Dwayne said, it doesn't matter if we pick A or B. We still have to, every year, explain to the public, this is how this process works. And that's unfortunately, well, fortunately, it's just part of our job to educate the public as to how city government works.
True statement. Ryan, any opinion?
Just correct me if I'm wrong. If we do set it at six point three, we cannot go up. We can only go down.
Correct.
That's my biggest concern, is that you set that number and something does come later, you can't go back up and fix that.
Cut something else.
Dan, any opinion?
Well, I wish there was, uh, I wish there was one that was close, you know, in between. Well, I mean, and I guess that, so we've got two options for you here. But, you know, this is not a, this resolution, you know, it's not due until the end of the month. If there is another number, if, obviously, I mean, Nancy and I both understand, you know, and the union negotiations is probably the biggest one. Now, healthcare, we do have a substantial increase already budgeted in there. And hopefully that, you know, is lower than we're planning. But I mean, there is certainly a possibility, I mean, if, for example, adding a hundred thousand dollars to that general fund levy, which would cover, you know, wage increases, um, some of the changes made to some of the smaller line items, if that would raise the comfortability level, then I think that's certainly something we can do. All it requires us to do is to change the number in this resolution, which can be changed very simply. Uh, my own perspective, and not to cut you off, Dan, I mean, I, you know, the problem that we run into every year is the sticker shock, that folks get that preliminary tax statement, and we expect it to go down. But I mean, I think, you know, it behooves me to try and be as honest about it. You know, my goal is to get this as economically feasible for everyone as possible. We just, we're talking to the county. Um, they're gonna have a levy increase. And the school district, theirs is kinda weird, but it goes up and down depending on a variety of factors. Um, but I mean, I'm certainly open to, you know, creating that as a third option, if it raises the comfortability level. I mean, if that's, if that's something you're interested, I think we could certainly do that. No. I mean, if we picked a number in between, closer to, say, eight percent, you still got that, our ultimate goal is to be under six. We know that.
Mm-hmm.
But then that gives us just that buffer, if there is that negotiation error, where we don't end up cutting something that maybe we didn't need to cut. You know?
The difference percent looks like it's what, four, forty thousand roughly?
Thirty-six thousand for one percent of the general funds, about that, something like that.
So, adding three percent to the six to make it nine and a half, nine point three is a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred, a hundred thousand roughly. But if that covers that, that gets you between those two numbers, it's more comfortable. And what was the increase the previous year percent-wise? Just to clarify.
Right on six.
So, maintain that, trying to maintain that number.
And ultimately, I agree. I mean, we do want to get it down. I just don't wanna lock us into something that then becomes problematic.
Well, and I guess that's why, you know, we have two options here, but I consider that to be kind of our range.
Sure.
So, I mean, that certainly is a very fair point. I mean, my goal is to try and be as accurate as I can be to you, to provide you the best information I have. I feel like we feel comfortable at one level, but we certainly understand there's feedback. And I appreciate that feedback because it makes it easier for me and Nancy and our job to actually help formulate these things for the council.
Appreciate that. Kent, entertain a motion?
So, with that discussion, I'd be comfortable going somewhere in the middle too.
Okay. Can we suggest, uh? Eight point five? Something like that?
No, we had to have a dollar amount for the...
Well, so what we'll do is, we'll take that.
So, we'll decide on this side then.
Well, we can. I mean, once you take a look at, I mean, the change would be in the base levy, you know, and you could see what the shift would be.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, it's, uh, I mean, if you pick a dollar amount, I guess if you wanna do a hundred thousand or something like that, you know, Nancy can calculate that and we would move forward with that as the baseline levy that we'd set for tonight's number.
Yeah, for any of them, we can back into it. You can choose to give us a percent increase or a dollar amount increase. And we'll reflect that in the resolution. We can approve it tonight, or we can still reflect that information and bring it back to the September for your final approval at that point. So, we can
Yeah, either one's feasible.
work with it anyway.
I would be more comfortable having that number in front of me to look at more closely. And then if the library does have that meeting between this and the next meeting, maybe we have more information, or maybe we have more information on some of our other things that are going on to maybe help us to clarify that number.
And I think it's better to have the actual number slash percentage in the packet so that when people are reviewing it, deciding whether they need to come to a meeting or not, they have the most accurate information in front of them.
Okay. Well, I guess that would be the, what number would you like us to target so we can get that document prepared, that resolution?
For the next meeting?
Yes, for the next meeting.
The three nine, three million nine hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and sixty-four?
What would be the percentage basis that you'd like us to target, I guess? So, right now, those two options, one was eleven point eight, one was, uh, six point three. Um, you know, what would be?
Nine point three and eight point five.
Right. I mean, I guess you just give us the number that you're feeling comfortable with, and that's what we'll set the resolution for.
I mean, we're just creating a lot of work for staff here that's not necessary. Either we're gonna do the six or the eleven. Why pick something in between? So, I mean, we'll just, somebody make a motion. I mean, if it's eight and a half or nine versus eleven, and we're gonna try to get under six, it's the same issue. It doesn't matter if it's eleven, ten, nine, eight, seven, whatever. It's either six or eleven.
Well, but if your concern is trying to avoid sticker shock first and foremost, and if we have the extra time to look at this one more time, maybe we should.
Sure. Okay.
And I don't, I don't wanna be the squeaky sticky wheel here, Chris, but I, you know, rather than doing the sticker shock of doing the full eleven or trapping ourselves with the six percent, is it worth having the next round of meetings with the department heads and?
No, it is.
Or is that, is that just wasting time?
No, I'm just, it's just always been a foreign concept to me. We decide what we wanna spend, then we go take what we need versus saying, hey, here's what we got. Here's how we can spend it. I mean, it's like paying my bills on Friday afternoon. I don't decide to pay my bills and go, hey, I need to make this much extra profit this week, so I'm gonna go take it from somebody.
No, I get...
That's just my concept of the whole thing. It's like, we're setting our budget completely. I mean, we take what our needs and wants are, and we try to keep that down. And we try to put some kinda cap on it because we are on a very cheap base to live. We have really nice amenities and services, which is what people want when they live here. It's just a foreign concept to me that we better get more because we might wanna spend more. Well, what do we wanna spend and take that? So, yeah, we come back with a number more in between after some more department head meetings and come back with something in between there. That'd be awesome.
Yeah. And I mean, what we'll do is, uh, if that's the way that what council wants to go is, we'll have some of those meetings. We'll, uh, we'll send out some possibilities to you ahead of time. And then please get back to me or Nancy, both of us, C C S, and just let us know or please stop in. Because that's always gonna be the easiest way for us to talk about this ahead of time. And maybe some of this confusion is a little may then. Um, but I appreciate the feedback. It's just for us to, you know, my goal is to always try and keep the levy as low as we can. But that's also realistic to provide the services that we wanna have. Because, uh, that's our goal of the city. It certainly is our, is always our, I'm sure the council shares that view too. Do you have an idea on union negotiations or when that might be?
After we set the levy.
Okay.
Those will be, so until October, November, December, mediation, arbitration, whatever.
I'm just curious. Just makes it easier if we, you know, there's that little area there every time, that's it.
No, that's not gonna be settled before we set this.
All right. Okay. Well, that's the feedback I think we needed.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody, for a good discussion. Um, administrator's report.
Okay, a couple things here. We'll get down to it. Um, do have some updates in here, and it's my fault for not including the EMS minutes. So, we'll be going forward, including those two. I write them up every month, so I might as well include them anyways. But I have not been doing that. So, because we do have some really exciting things happening at that meeting every month. And Josh can attest to it, and Joe here too. Uh, a lot of interesting discussion. We've got some fire trucks potentially coming this month. Maybe later in the month, we'll be seeing the quotes for those. EMS took a look at them. And the assistant chief and chief are looking into a few things I asked them to look into to try and see if we can eliminate some more costs. Um, other than that though, they are looking at holding, uh, some public meetings regarding the facility, uh, changes that will be starting. I think the date I've got in there is October fifth at six thirty at the fire hall, um, working with the I C S folks who are gonna be preparing some, uh, documents and some handouts, that sort of thing for us. Um, so it's very interesting. We always do try to get public input whenever we can, and we're looking forward to that. Um, so that's something there. Um, sounds like we've got an updated date for that public engagement meeting. That's the thirtieth. Um, so thank you for getting that set up. Um, appreciate that, Brandon. Um, you've got a couple of other items in there. Uh, safety committee. Uh, you'll notice there's a few more coffee mugs on the desk tonight. That was one of the items that was discussed. Um, also, you've got some other simple things in there as well. Uh, we've got some interest in some potential E D A projects with some multifamily housing. We've got some meetings set up with folks who are developers doing that. And so, uh, we're excited to see that. And then I've got that item on fall forums. And I'm sure in the past, members of, you know, the tenables last year, they were canceled. This year, you can see the locations and the dates and the costs. If you're interested in attending one of those, uh, fall forums the league is holding, please let us know. We can definitely get you signed up for that. Um, there's a couple that are in our area, uh, really about one in Austin on the twenty-ninth of September. Looks like it's probably the closest one. Uh, and then below that, you've also got the, uh, proposal for architectural services, um, which, um, we thankfully have had, got two volunteers. Appreciate council member Ferris and council member Egler for volunteering to help with this, uh, project, taking a look at it. The trick is that we're gonna be moving forward just to see where, uh, what we can actually do and what's feasible. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that. Um, so I don't know exactly what it'll look like, but it dovetails nicely with our potential street project that's coming on Highway fifty-seven. So, I mean, really appreciate that. Um, the only other thing I have is, um, just to follow up on schedules. At a previous meeting, we had talked about, uh, the council's schedules for this fall. And we had said, well, wait until it gets a little bit closer. Um, I know that there's some, uh, different days that we were looking at possibly shifting some of the meetings around. So, I didn't know if anybody had any feedback on that yet or not. Because what we're looking at is, uh, potentially, um, November, that second meeting in November is on the twenty-fourth, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
It's the day before Thanksgiving. Um, I know when I was speaking with Nancy, we had taken a look at possibly shifting to just one meeting in November, uh, maybe having that on the seventeenth, and then having a meeting on the first and eighth of December, which would allow us to complete our budget on schedule as well. Um, but I'm certainly open to other suggestions. But it would make it a little bit easier for us in terms of, uh, the holiday season that's, uh, gonna be in that timeframe.
Will we need to move the November tenth regular scheduled meeting? Could we have that just as our only meeting for November, since we're gonna meet three weeks later on the first?
We certainly could. Yes, we certainly could. Yeah. We could do, so we were looking at either the tenth or the seventeenth, because it's kind of in the middle of the month, and then the two meetings in December on the first and the eighth. But, uh, so yeah, I mean, I'm open to either one of those. That was just kind of what we were thinking, was to try and finalize that so we can get it out and published for folks.
So, basically, is everybody available on the first would be the only change. Could we cancel the meeting on the twenty-fourth and add a meeting on the first of December and cancel the twenty-second of December? Would we cancel the twenty-fourth of November and the twenty-second of December and basically move that up so we can?
It helps to be looking at the right month on the calendar.
There you go. So, basically, we're canceling November twenty-fourth. I'm sure that works with everybody. Wednesday, the first of December, adding, moving the December twenty-second meeting to December first. And that's because we have to have our levy finalized and to the county. It gives us a discussion on the first. And if we can't finalize then, we can always come back the eighth and do it
Right.
to have the, another discussion. So...
Sounds with me.
Does that work?
Works with me.
The first? Sorry. So, you wanna get that updated on the city website?
Absolutely. We'll update that. No, I appreciate that feedback. Uh, that was just what we needed to try and make sure that we're final. And I mean, I certainly think we have adequate time. You know, the budget framework, I think we're ahead of schedule, really. You know, for us to be meeting with the department heads, that's our goal. We'll bring that information back. And I don't think there'll be any issues. I hope there aren't any issues. And I think we'll be good to go with that. So, thank you very So thank you very much.
Do we need to approve the bid for the liquor store?
You don't, you don't need to approve that. No, this is more informational for you. It's just to let you know that, that we're moving forward with some design work.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Otherwise, I do, we'll take questions if anybody's got questions for me.
The one on the September twenty-ninth, that's also the Southeast Minnesota League meeting in conjunction with the league.
Oh, is it down in Austin also? Okay. Well, so that might be a good one to target.
So it's a combined meeting for both groups.
Are you planning on going to that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Would you like to go to the forum as well?
I will let you know I don't...
Okay, yeah, let me know because we can get you signed up for that as well too, so.
Okay, and, uh, before we go to personnel, I just had one other thing I wanted to mention during the mayor's report that I totally spaced out. But we had a fire here a couple of weeks ago, right behind us. At E.D.A. yesterday, we're, we're working with all the parties involved with the things there to help them out on that. So, uh, appreciate, uh, everything. Cass and Fire Department, Matherville Fire Department, Byron Fire Department, Dodge Center Fire Department. I was listening to the scanner that night and they just kept calling other people. I'm like, huh, interesting. So, but no, thanks for taking care of them and they're, and, uh, Joe is planning on rebuilding right back in the same spot.